23rd, 2012. I'd ask everyone in attendance to join with City Council in singing our National Anthem.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country, which generally look better than maybe they do tonight, on our screens at least. And thank you to the Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the musical rendition. So I would look for a motion for the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move the adoption of the minutes of the City Council meeting held January the 9th, 2012.
Thank you. Anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. Motion for the adoption of the agenda. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries and brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. We had two delegations that let us know they were going to be in attendance tonight. And the first was from Grand Prairie Minor Ball, Mr. Dietrich and Mr. Beck. If you'd like to come up and join us at the front table here. And I'll turn on your microphone and you're live.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillors, for having us. As you know, Grand Prairie Minor Ball is underway, developing some facilities for youth in Grand Prairie. And recently, we've come across news that I think there's a miscommunication in that we're running out of funds from the city. Funds that are important to us to finish products, projects that we started. I think the miscommunication is that we feel that the city has committed financially to our association and therefore we've committed to certain projects. We're partway through a five-year project in our association. And we feel the need to maybe have a second look at funding our needs, if that's okay.
So you're referring to, there was, I think, in the last council, there was a five-year commitment for $60,000 a year, is that correct?
That's correct. A five-year commitment of $60,000 for a total of $300,000 takes us through various projects. Understandably, we can't build what we need facility-wise overnight. So we thought it would be easier for us to slowly build along as we went. And in saying that, we're two-thirds, maybe three-fifths of the way through. And yeah, some of these commitments, we'd sure like to finish off.
And so to this point, how much of the funding have you received from the city?
$120,000.
$120,000?
Yes, of the $300,000 that was committed.
Okay. See maybe some questions then? Councillor Rice?
Hey, so it's your understanding that years three, four, and five were not included in the 2012-13-14 budget of council, is that correct?
No, in fact, we were understanding, when we received a check presentation from the city of Grand Prairie, that there was the full $300,000 commitment. So therefore, we went along in our five-year programming. In order to prepare for that, we had to take bids for the full five years.
And we received word on Tuesday that it didn't get into the budget. That's when we found out.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Rice or Councillor Adman?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Hi, guys, just for new councillors, can you just give us a bit of an overview of how many diamonds, what kinds of projects are you involved in? And can you also just remind us what percentage of the ballplayers in association are city residents?
We started a very ambitious program a number of years ago. We had four diamonds that were out there. We run into different issues because we need mounds and different sizes of diamonds. So we started expanding Diamond Five out at the Evergreen Park. That's when we sort of learned what it took and what we were getting into and everything else. And we have a real bottleneck on our younger kids. We've got anywhere from different years, from five to 650 kids, 98% are city residents' kids. Our facility's probably worth, in the neighborhood of $3 million plus. You guys have put now $120,000 in total into that over the 20 years that we've been down there. We've got commitments from a number of other places. The county matched your $300,000. The government put in $75,000 towards our clubhouse. We've got gift and kind coming from everywhere. And it's probably in the top two or three facilities in Western Canada for baseball.
Are you adding more diamonds?
We are up to, we've got 13 total in the process.
Good.
And yeah, we went from four to 13.
Thank you.
And a clubhouse and services, which was the toughest part, was getting power and water there. That probably was a four-year project in its own, which we just got last week.
Okay. Any further questions for the delegation? Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So gentlemen, if this was an error on City Council's part, we apologize. I'm sure that we're going to be able to do something to rectify the situation. But what's the timing like for getting your project onto the next phase for this year's construction?
Well, we've already committed to the construction of the diamonds. We're in the middle of doing the clubhouse as we speak, so we're actually pouring the basement floor this week and things like that on the other side. But the diamonds, of course, we have to wait till frost has gone and it's dry and everything. But we've got three diamonds that need to be finished up from last year's start of construction. And then we've got another one that started. So by spring, we will have people showing up with materials that they've ordered and all the rest of it. So, you know, time-wise, we're probably good till spring.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any further questions for the delegation? No? Okay. And then seeing no further questions, seeing no further questions, thanks very much, guys. We deal with the delegation, just sort of a cork of the agenda, our delegation business is at the end of the agenda. But I think there will likely be a motion coming out of this to direct administration to have a look at this and figure out what went up, what went wrong and how we can fix it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much, guys. We did have another delegation that said that they wanted to come and speak to us. And we had some representatives from the Canadian Cancer Society. And I see Therese there and you have somebody with you. So if you'd like to join us and introduce yourselves?
Good evening.
I don't know, that looks like a one and two-thirds.
You're probably right, but she promised that tonight is not the night.
Come on.
Add excitement to the City Council meeting tonight. I'm Therese Chauvin with the Canadian Cancer Society, and this is one of our volunteers, Mariska Burton. And she'll say, give her a little bit of personal experience of hers, and I'll do the good, dry stuff. You have some packages there that I will be referring to at the end of the presentation. I thank you for having us here this evening. And I will, I've just said that, so sorry about that. As you know, the Canadian Cancer Society is a national community-based organization whose volunteers and whose mission is eradication of cancer and the enhancement of the life of those who are living with cancer. We are here this evening because of tobacco. What else would you have me hear, right? It's a leading cause of cancer death. Tobacco uses, places an enormous burden on our quality of life and our healthcare system. It is the leading cause of preventable disease, disability, and death in Alberta, resulting in an estimated 3,000 needless deaths annually. And for every premature death caused by tobacco, there are at least 20 tobacco users living with a serious tobacco-related illness. Regrettably, a new generation of Albertans are facing a lifetime of addiction to tobacco. While overall smoking rates have been declining in recent years, smoking rates among Alberta remain disturbingly high at 14%. And that's all our youth. This is unacceptable. We must act now and implement measures that will help protect youth from the dangers of tobacco use and prevent future diseases. Prevention is key in the fight against cancer, and public policies make it easier for people to make healthy choices that reduce their cancer risk. The Canadian Cancer Society believes that the following tobacco reduction policy recommendations will help reduce tobacco use and improve the health and quality of life of people living in Grand Prairie, particularly our children and our youth. I want to speak about two important health measures that will help protect kids from the dangers of tobacco use. Making vehicles carrying children smoke-free and smoking restrictions in select outdoor areas focusing on spaces frequented by children and youth. We all recognize that chronic disease can be prevented by healthy living. Our social and physical environments, particularly in the communities we live, can support healthy choices which can help prevent or reduce disease. Municipalities are influential innovators in providing health environments which make a difference to public health. In Section 7A of the Municipal Government Act provides local councils with a broad authority to pass bylaws to protect the health and safety of its residents. A few years ago, the Alberta government decided to go one step further and provide municipalities with explicit authority to pass smoking bylaws that go beyond the provincial smoking ban. So in other words, the Alberta government is encouraging local councils to provide leadership on this important health issue. As a result, municipalities can play a major role in improving the health and the quality of their residents. There's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke, and in particular, children are more severely affected by exposure to secondhand smoke than adults are because they absorb more of the harmful chemicals found in tobacco smoke. This is due to their developing lungs, higher breathing rate, and less developed immune systems. When children are exposed to secondhand smoke, they are at an increased risk for sudden infant death syndrome, leukemia, brain, and other childhood cancers, acute respiratory infections, middle ear disease, and increased severity of asthma. So protecting them from exposure is critical. When smoking occurs in a vehicle, secondhand smoke levels can become highly concentrating. Smoking a single cigarette in a car can produce levels of secondhand smoke found in a smokiest bars and restaurants. And it is a problem in Alberta. In a 2009 survey showed that 27% of Alberta youth were exposed to tobacco smoke while in a vehicle. And even outdoors, tobacco smoke is still dangerous. Research shows that being within a few feet of someone smoking outdoors can rival exposure levels previously found in indoor establishments. Young people are less able to guard themselves against exposure to secondhand smoke. Therefore, it is important that policy be in place to protect them. Smoking restrictions, both indoor and out, help challenge the perception that tobacco use is a normal adult behavior. This in turn can have a positive effect on youth by limiting youth exposure of adult smoking. Policies that restrict smoking in a vehicle carrying children can help empower more parents to take steps that will support their children in remaining tobacco-free for life. Research indicates that ongoing or severe exposure to secondhand smoke, particularly in a confined space such as a vehicle, has a direct and measurable impact on the brain that can increase the potential for nicotine addiction. Consequently, when parents provide smoke-free vehicle and home, their children are less likely to use tobacco in the future. We want to be clear that the primary objective of outdoor smoking bans where children and youth congregate is to model healthy behaviors to young people and to further reduce the social acceptability, sorry, acceptability of smoking. Youth smoking rates remain disturbingly high, and we must take further steps to address this problem. As a community, we need to walk the talk if we truly want kids to remain smoke-free. Every time a child sees someone smoking in a public place, it sends a mixed message about the harmful nature of this deadly and addictive product. Kids are greatly influenced by social cues, and we cannot turn a blind eye to this fact. Since the majority of smokers start before the age of 18, these policies will help support reductions in youth tobacco use and improve overall public health. We all have a responsibility to protect youth from the lethal consequences of tobacco use. Smoking restrictions help smokers to cut back or even quit. Smoke-free policies encourage public dialogue and raise awareness about the dangers of tobacco use and the risks of exposure to secondhand smoke, especially among children. These policies also support smokers in their attempts to quit using tobacco. Evidence shows that when restrictions are in place, smokers light up less often and therefore smoke less. This encourages tobacco users to think about quitting altogether. Consequently, there are fewer chronic health issues among children and the general population. Parks, playgrounds, and other outdoor recreational areas are common places for everyone to use. They are important spaces for people of all ages to participate in healthy and enjoyable outdoor activities. These spaces belong to everyone, and everyone has the right to enjoy them safely. Restricting smoking in select outdoor locations, especially those frequented by children, will provide healthy, safe areas and can help improve the quality of outdoor space by decrease smoking-related litter in municipal parks. There's a strong support for smoke-free vehicle carrying children and youth among the public, including smokers. A 2010 survey found that 89% of Albertans agree that smoking should be prohibited in cars transporting children and youth under the age of 18. 75% of smokers support smoke-free vehicles when children and youth are present. In 2007, the Canadian Medical Association passed a resolution calling for bans on smoking in vehicles when minors are present. The Alberta Urban Municipalities Association in 2008 approved a motion calling for a provincial ban on smoking in vehicles with children present. When smoking restrictions are implemented in parks and playgrounds, evidence shows that both non-smokers and smokers support the policy. Policies that restrict smoking does not impact a smoker's use of a park. Smoking in all outdoor spaces. The Alberta Recreations and Park supports restricting smoking in select outdoor areas. The association passed a resolution in November of 2010 that indicates the support for policy measures that create smoke-free parks and playgrounds in Alberta. Where smoke-free policies have been implemented in parks and other recreational outdoor areas, there has been great success and strong support among citizens. A Woodstock, Ontario survey found 84% of smokers in the city said that the smoke-free parks bylaw was good for their children's health. In Vancouver, 75% of people favored smoke-free beaches, and 88% supported smoke-free playgrounds. A majority of respondents also supported smoke-free playing fields, trails, and parks. Furthermore, 74% of respondents felt it was the responsibility of government to be a leader in providing smoke-free outdoor air. Another survey which assessed the effectiveness of a smoke-free outdoor spaces bylaw in Bridgewater, Nova Scotia, found that 86% of smokers were aware of and complied with the bylaw. 12% of current smokers were trying to quit because of the bylaw. In the Yukon, B.C., Manitoba, Ontario, and the Maritimes have smoke-free vehicle legislation, and they are currently protecting the majority of Canadian children. Unfortunately, Alberta is lagging behind this issue. This is another reason for municipalities to take leadership. And municipalities are leading the way. In Alberta, the town of Oketoks, the city of Medicine Hat have a smoke-free bylaw that protects youth under the age of 16. And the city of Leduc and the town of Athabasca have each passed a bylaw that protects children under the age of 18. Several municipalities in Alberta and Canada have implemented some form of outdoor smoking. In Alberta, several cities have been moving in this direction, including St. Albert, Red Deer, and Lethbridge. St. Albert requires all outdoor events, public events, to be smoke-free, including the Rainmaker Rodeo and its Saturday Farmer's Market. Last year, Lethbridge banned smoking in all playgrounds throughout the city. The city of Edmonton is currently considering smoking restrictions in city playgrounds and sports fields. Across Canada, in more than 50 municipalities have banned smoking in outdoor locations. And about one-quarter of these communities have comprehensive bans that include parks, playgrounds, and recreation fields. These bans have received a great deal of public support and cooperation with very few, if any, enforcement problems. Despite decades of public education, campaigns on the dangers of secondhand tobacco smoke and evidence illustrating negative outcomes regarding youth exposure to adult smoking behavior, smokers continue to use tobacco in areas where children are, be it a car or a playground. Because of this, further deterrents are needed. People are more likely to comply when there's a law in place. Evidence shows that a comprehensive strategy to policy development and implementation, which includes legislation, public education, and enforcement, has proven to be very successful in protecting the public from exposure to secondhand smoke. Many jurisdictions throughout Canada have successfully implemented both smoke-free vehicle and outdoor restrictions. Studies of existing bylaws demonstrate that enforcement has not been difficult and compliance is not an issue. In fact, these types of bylaws are by and large self-enforcing. With a combination of active enforcement, adequate signage, and public education, compliance is high. These bylaws become a new community standard in which the majority of residents comply. In the same way, citizens comply with other regulations such as the mandatory use of seat belts when driving or controls on open liquor in public parks, people learn to obey these laws as well.
Good evening. I was born and raised in Grand Prairie. When I was much younger, my mom discovered that I had asthma. With my parents being divorced, my mom ensured that I grew up in a smoke-free home because she knew and understood the consequences of not having a smoke-free home. My dad and grandmother, however, did not. Whenever I went for visits with my dad, he'd always be smoking in the vehicle. The smoke was always so concentrated, making it hard for me to breathe. There were times that I had to go back to my mom's in the middle of a visit because I got so sick. Every time that the visit was over, I would go back home and have to suffer the next two weeks with a really bad cold. I never understood why I was so sick all the time, but now I do. Why should a child suffer for his or her parent's choices? My mom always made sure that their environment was safe for me, but unfortunately, my dad and grandma didn't understand how important that was for me. I needed the adults in my life to protect me because I was too little. I know that if there was a law prohibiting smoking in vehicles where children are present, I wouldn't have been such a sick little girl. The saying goes, "It takes a village to raise a child." So that's why I'm asking you, my city, to help us raise the future generation and make it a better place for them to be. I know that I am going to do in my power to not have my child anywhere near smoking, but I won't be with her 24/7. So please help me keep my child safe, my child healthy by placing the bylaws for smoke-free vehicles and smoke-free outdoor places where children are.
The Canadian Cancer Society believes that all children and youth deserve equal protection from the adverse health effects of secondhand tobacco smoke. One of the most prevalent locations minors are exposed to secondhand tobacco smoke is vehicle. Despite public health information and warnings on the dangers of exposure to secondhand tobacco smoke, some adults continue to smoke tobacco in their vehicles when children and youth are present. In order to help protect our children from exposure to secondhand smoke and help reduce youth use of tobacco, the Canadian Cancer Society recommends that Grand Prairie implement a bylaw to prohibit smoking in vehicles transporting children under the age of 18. The Canadian Cancer Society also believes that implementing smoking restrictions in select outdoor areas, particularly where children and youth congregate, will help create positive modeling and health messaging and reduce youth uptake of tobacco. Such restrictions would also help decrease the impact of smoking-related litter on the environment and will reduce exposure to secondhand tobacco outdoors. We recommend the following three-year phase-end period for a bylaw. Year number one, youth-oriented outdoor areas: playgrounds, sports fields, pools, rinks, and other outdoor recreation facilities. Year two, outdoor areas frequented by youth: fairs, markets, festivals, concerts, attractions. And year three, outdoor areas accessible to youth: parks, trails, recreation areas, and green spaces. As you can see, all of these restrictions are focused on reducing the visibility of smoking among youth. The overall objective of this proposal is to improve our quality of life and to protect young people from the deadly consequences of tobacco dependence. We ask council, ladies and gentlemen, to support these initiatives and do your part to help keep kids tobacco-free for life. In your package, on the left-hand side, you will find two documents with further information on smoke-free vehi- on smoke-free vehicles and smoke-free outdoor areas. And on the right-hand side, there's a double-sided sheet with our policy recommendations. You also will find the Leduc's bylaw for smoke-free vehicle that was signed in December of 2010 and Woodstock, Ontario bylaw for smoke-free public places that was implemented in 2008. I will be presenting this to the Community Development Committee tomorrow. Any questions?
No, thank you very much for your presentation. I will ask council members if they have any questions. I would wonder how much you'd have left to present to Community Development Committee tomorrow. Counselor Rice?
So if we were, say, tonight to make a motion under the delegation session to refer this to administration, to come back with a report, then I guess I'm not sure why. What would be the point of going to Community Development tomorrow if it's dealt with tonight?
Yeah, that's sort of a process question, but I think if there was a council member that was willing to do that, that would certainly set it in motion. There wouldn't be anything additional that we would do tomorrow at committee because obviously, we wouldn't be looking to solve it all in one meeting, right? Okay. Counselor Wong?
I guess I'm just concerned about the committee's time, is what I...
Counselor Wong?
Obviously, I have a ton of questions that could be answered when administration were to come back with a report. But this is a message that I feel needs to be heard from our provincial government or needs to be given to our provincial government. So my question to you is, is this something that you're presenting to our local MLAs to bring back to the legislature?
You can be guaranteed of that. I don't know, for some of you, Helen, I know you were on a council then. Bill, I think you were also. When we were looking at smoke-free workplaces, that's exactly what we went through. We waited for the province and we were advocating for the province, but it was municipality by municipality, and it was a large number of municipalities before the Alberta government finally stepped up to the plate and passed a legislation. It's very painful to have to go from one municipality to the other. It was about like a ten-year process to finally protect Albertans.
Okay, so, sorry, is this a message? Have you brought it to our provincial government, or you will be?
Yes, yeah. We continually are speaking to our MLAs throughout the province.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions for the delegation? No, seeing none, then ladies, thank you very much. Thanks for making the time to be here tonight.
Thank you very much. Having us.
No problem. We will deal with the delegation. Motion's arising from the delegation portion at the end of our agenda. If there's anything else that's pressing that you feel that you need to leave the room for, of course, we'd understand. But we will make a motion either to receive further information or to ask administration to do something at the end of our agenda.
Thank you.
So this is the delegation portion of our agenda. If there was anybody else that wanted to come forward to speak to council, this would be the opportunity. We did have two delegations that let us know ahead of time that they wanted to speak to council, but certainly, there is an open opportunity for anybody in the community that wanted to come forward. And it doesn't look like we'll have anybody else coming forward this evening, so we'll move on to public hearings, which we had none, unfinished business, which we have none. And that takes us into reports on item eight point one. Who's gonna introduce that? Ms. Ferguson?
Mr. Mayor, this report is recommending a time change for the February 21st council meeting for it to commence at 4:00 P.M. instead of 6:30 P.M. This is to allow council to attend the Growing the North Conference and events that are being held later that evening.
Thanks very much. I see Counselor Rice?
I move that council approve that the start time for the February 21st, 2012 council meeting be changed to 4:00 P.M.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that brings us to item nine point one, Combative Sports Commission.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to make a recommendation that council receive the minutes for the Combative Sports Commission meeting held on December 13th, 2011.
Thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes, Counselor?
Basically, Mayor Given and council, we reviewed the bylaws, bylaw C-173A, and it was basically just amendments, basically just some housekeeping. The commission had its first original fight. In the end, we found that some housekeeping needed because there were some oversights on some stuff and duplications on others. So now we just cleaned that up. We also gave license to promoters, T. Quinell and K. Kerbitz, for they got licenses to promote in the city of Grand Prairie. And we also discussed K&amp;K production doing a proposed fight in Grand Prairie. And since then, it has not come through.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. That takes us to the Public Works Committee meeting from January 10th. I think that was Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes for the Public Works Committee meeting held January 10th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move that council approve a request to extend the period for subdivision approval and endorsement for subdivision application, Z-2008-0024 Northwest, the 11th, 71, 6, West, the 6, and Plan 9620256, Lot 1, for six months.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did you want to speak to it?
Sure. Basically, this is just to coincide with the adjacent property that we approved an extension for in a previous meeting so that the underground and all the land work and everything will be coincide with the approval previously on that property.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? To extend? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Just have a little technical difficulties on the right-hand side? Counselor Gustafson, if you want to carry on?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve the mayor send a letter of support to the county of Grand Prairie for Highway 40 South and Highway 43 East location study and include that the city's immediate capital projects, Highway 43 Southwest bypass and Northwest bypass and the airport intersection traffic lights continue to be high priority.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? To send the letter, so essentially, a letter of support that outlines that the city believes that the priorities for actual construction are those three that you mentioned. Is that correct? Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. And I'm not sure that we have the report here with us, but I would just like to reiterate that since Atco has put their facilities right on that same road, there is going to be about 200 employees there. And that is the center for the province for doing their meter work. And there also is the Silver Point Mobile Home Park. So that also has a huge amount of traffic. I just want to bring that up, if that's not already in that report.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Crokin. We certainly want to encourage the province to build the lights, given that it's their highway. I think they're taking the stance that any of the development around there means that we're the ones that should build the lights. But certainly, the provincial traffic along Highway 43 is the big concern. There's a number of those that'll be going through there.
Thank you, Mayor Given.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, was there anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
No, Mayor Given, that's all, thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Wong, I think you have the Protective Services Committee from January 17th. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held January 17th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any errors or omissions, discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I've asked Counselor O'Toole to make this next motion for me.
Okay, very good. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given, Counselor Dan Wong. I'd like to recommend that council give bylaw C-1064G, a bylaw to amend C-1064 Business Plan bylaw, first reading. And to speak on that...
Counselor O'Toole will just have first reading first, sorry, and then we'll do the discussion after second reading. So first reading to introduce it. So a motion to have first reading? Counselor, sorry, I don't believe it's open to debate. Do we get it on? A question, Counselor Rice?
I note that the recommendation from staff is we delete section 20. And I wondered if this first reading includes the deletion of 20.
Sure, so we have a motion to get the bylaws discussed on the table, and then we can have discussion and debate around that.
But I don't know what's going on the table, is my question.
So we have a motion to get it on. Once we vote to get it on, we can have the discussion about what it includes, and then people can choose whether they support second and third reading based on what the bylaw actually includes. So we'll call for the vote on first reading. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, that motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. To just give some background?
Sorry, Counselor O'Toole, if you want to make a motion for second reading.
I'll make a motion. Council give bylaw C-1064G, a bylaw to amend C-1064 Business Plan, second reading.
Business plan, second reading, and to speak to it?
And to speak on it. On the recommendation that Protective Services Committee amend the draft bylaw, 1064, by removing sections 20 and 21 pertaining to the cap on issued taxi licenses and send the revised... Okay. Background, on August 30th, 2011, the Protective Services Committee passed a motion directing administration to draft five proposed amendments into bylaw C-1064 Business License bylaw. The proposed amendments were as follows. One, to limit the number of taxis. Two, fare structure. Three, the fees. Four, the taxi brokers. And five, the taxi inspections. And I'm recommending that we do not go with what the administration suggested is to leave the amendments in.
Okay, so just for clarity, because I have a feeling this may be a question that would come up, is the recommendation that came forward from the committee was for the bylaw as drafted in the report, which included all those different sections. The administration recommendation at the committee was that the committee forward it to council without a couple of sections. The committee chose to forward it with all the sections included. So just so we're clear. Counselor Rice, I think that was your question, so straightforward. Okay, so, open for discussion and debate. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to urge council not to vote in favor of this bylaw amendment as presented. I believe that the cap is a negative thing for our city. The cap had already created this underground economy where black-market licensing can occur. Administration has already talked to us about that. And we realize that this is an issue with education of the taxi drivers. However, you know, it does open up the potential for exploitation of new immigrants to our city, those people that don't understand our way of doing business. So this has happened already and is likely to continue to happen. There are other ways that taxi drivers could get exploited through this kind of a cap system. I also believe that it ends up regulating a business in a way that interferes with the free market in an attempt to indirectly address safety concerns. Now, I know that there are some concerns that we would like to address in regards to safety, and there are some things that we'd like to encourage, such as handicap-accessible taxis and things like that. And I wish there were other ways to address it. I just feel that the bad outweighs the good in this sense. I think there's other ways that we could address the issue down the road. Just throwing something out there, one way we could introduce it that doesn't interfere with the free market system so much is to make licenses more expensive after you hit a certain number. So instead of capping, you're providing a disincentive by way of fees. And that will just naturally limit the expansion of that market. And that's something that we already do in the city when we talk about the licensing. By setting higher licensing fees, it automatically, in the free market system, shrinks the size of that market. Don't know that that is the actual solution, but I think that we need to explore more things like that rather than trying to get involved in business practices where I, and I strongly believe that the city has no place in doing that.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Well, I'm going to jump in Dan's cab here and vote against the motion as well. I believe we're really touching on private enterprise here. We don't cap liquor stores, we don't cap corner stores, freight companies, fast-food outlets. My biggest concern was, I believe, we need new taxis in a new city and with new people. And I really want to see more about the cleanliness of cabs. That's the biggest thing I hear around here is that the cabs aren't clean enough. The driving bylaw, the distracted driving bylaw, unfortunately, doesn't say that you can't eat a granola bar or a pizza when you're driving a cab or any other vehicle. And I believe that's very important to, when you're providing a service like that, to be service-oriented and provide a service to the clients of these cabs. So I will be voting against the motion.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. Just to speak on regards to what Counselor Wong had suggested, in committee, the bylaw enforcement officer had gave assurance that the education factor was already being looked into. And there already a program in place to make sure that potential new immigrants that were going to be into the driving of taxi cabs was already being a mentorship-type program where education would be there on the bylaw enforcement side to let them know that there's no underground market for cab-driving licenses.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Not to reiterate what has already been said by Counselors Wong and Gustafson, the one thing, this is the end of the pool that I didn't want to go into either. It's private enterprise and what else is going to come up that we may have to regulate? I think we do have a position with cabs to make sure they're safe, clean, and available. And as far as the amount of cabs are, I'm on board with the previous two counselors spoken. I won't be voting for this bylaw.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. So just for council members... Sorry, Counselor Robber?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, in the interest of getting all the information out for discussion purposes, I think we should be all... I'm assuming we're all aware, but really, as this has unfolded... First of all, there are four excellent components of this bylaw. These changes are positive and will help improve, I believe, the service provided to our citizens. With respect to the cap, as the discussion ensued over the months and finally to the last meeting, this cap would be reached over time through attrition. That is my understanding. There are 206, and there's a couple of outstanding, unique circumstances that the administration have to deal with. So it's not like we're going to, as of tomorrow. If this bylaw passes... If this bylaw passes, doesn't mean that that's the cap as of tomorrow or whenever. I believe the understanding would be that that would be something that would happen over time through attrition. So I think that's a positive for the industry. I do believe that it still does prohibit new competitive taxi companies, taxi drivers, I guess taxis, taxis, from entering the market, and that could be one of the downsides of the bylaw. But I just didn't want everybody to assume that we're going to cut 30 or 40 taxis off the road as of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think Counselor Radburn covered off most of it fairly well. The only thing that I would add to it is that I'm also under the impression that a number of the taxis that we have licenses out for right now are inoperable. You know, so we've, to think that we're going to have a lack of cabbies, pardon me, of cabs available, I just don't think that that's a reality. And, you know, I certainly don't want to be infringing on private enterprise, but I think unfortunately, in this industry, with what we've seen, we do have to come up with some limitations, and I think that this is one way to address it. I would sure, sure wouldn't want the other components of this bylaw to go away. So I would encourage everyone to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Monroe. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There's a lot of, the cap is very big. The city of Red Deer is about 83, so there's lots of room for private. And I think Counsel Monroe was thinking too about reinspection where they're looked at if there's something wrong. There's a 76% failure rate already with this system we have. So I'm looking forward to voting yes to it and hopefully changing, because the years of the cabs, as far as I'm concerned, you can have a 20-year cab, and a lot of them are older. We have a big problem there, so I'm hoping eventually this will start something more.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Counselor Rice?
I would be prepared to move an amendment to the bylaw that 1064-G be amended by removing sections 20 and 21.
Okay, so you're making that motion, Counselor Rice?
Yep.
So that motion is in order? So Counselor Rice's motion would be a move to amend second reading, or to amend the bylaw for second reading, and basically would be removing sections 20 and 21, which are specifically related to the cap on taxi licenses. Okay, so we can speak to the amendment. Discussion or debate on Counselor Rice's motion to amend. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm certainly supportive of the amendment. It does remove the cap and keeps all the other good elements of the bylaw in place. Like I said before, I'm just not in favor of putting a cap on an industry that belongs in the free enterprise category. I think if there's specific issues that we want to deal with that have to do with safety and cleanliness and rates and things like that, we should deal with those directly and not try to meddle in business affairs.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion to amend by removing those two sections? If counsel's leeway, if it would be okay, this is an issue that certainly I had some feelings on at the committee level, so I'd like to enter the debate at this point. I am supportive of the cap. I believe that, first off, if there's such a thing as a cap, I prefer to think of it as target. We've been talking about it, and certainly in the bylaws referred to as a cap, but it's a target that we would hope at some point perhaps to maybe be able to get down towards, considering how far we are over it at this point. Secondly, in regards to new entrance to the market or somebody willing to, wanting to expand their company, there's still a huge amount of flexibility should somebody buy a hybrid vehicle or wheelchair accessible vehicle. They could start up an entirely new company with a fleet of hybrids or wheelchair accessible vehicles and be completely welcome to compete in the Grand Prairie marketplace. And then just finally around interfering with private business, a number of council members have spoken to the issues of cleanliness and safety and rates and said that those are things that we can deal with and we can put in bylaws in place to deal with those. I would suggest that we don't have any bylaws to deal with the cleanliness of liquor stores or restaurants or truckers or any of those other companies. And so thereby, if we do get into those areas, we are in fact directly interfering in private business. So if the concern is about the impact of the interference of the city in private business, I'm not so sure that we're getting away from that by deleting this portion of the bylaw, which enables the city to set some direction on what we hope to see for developments in the industry. So, thanks very much for your indulgence. I appreciated the opportunity to get in on that point. Is there any further discussion or debate on the motion to amend the bylaw to remove those two sections? Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to remind everybody here too that when we were asking the taxi industry what they thought of the cap, they were okay with it. They, from administration, told us that they were okay with the cap. It's a, there was a number of situations where people had given up their licenses or did not renew because they were out of the country, but we made amendments to make them back in place. And so we come up with this number, and it's not like we're shooting down the cab industry. There was a number that they felt was a reasonable number. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Okay, any further discussion or debate on the amendment? Seeing none, then I'd remind council that a vote in favor of the amendment would strip those sections relating to the cap on taxi licenses. A vote against would be to keep those in. So I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, so the bylaw is amended, and we'll move on to the second reading of the bylaw as amended. So we have Counselor O'Toole's original motion, which is now the motion as amended, the bylaw without sections 20 and 21. Any discussion or debate on the bylaw as amended, on second, excuse me, on second reading of the bylaw as amended? Around the table, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So Counselor O'Toole, we'd look for, our options are for, if we wish to, to have a motion to have third reading tonight?
Thank you much, Mayor Given.
Counselor O'Toole, I'm waiting to see if Counselor O'Toole makes the motion.
Council have third reading of bylaw C-1064-G. Give this without the amendment.
So the bylaw has been amended, so all you have to do is, if we choose to, if you choose, to make a motion to have third reading here tonight.
I'd like to make third reading, please.
Okay, so a motion to have third reading. Now, this bylaw, this motion must be unanimous, otherwise the third reading would come back at a subsequent council meeting. So, discussion or debate on the merits of having third reading here tonight? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does not carry. So the third reading of the bylaw will come back at a subsequent council meeting. Counselor, oh, sorry, that was actually Counselor Wong's committee meeting. Counselor Wong, was there anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. I believe that brings us to General Government Services, January 17th. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held January 17th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council approve the award of RFP 27-215-11 to MS Govern as a solution provided for the permitting and inspection system project in the amount of $280,452 Canadian for software licensing, training, professional services, and first year support costs exclusive of GST. These costs are included in the ITS Business Application Capital Project Budget. It is a priority in that budget line. We had three vendors propose, two, we used the two envelope system. Upon the technical requirement review, one of them did not meet specifications or the standard. Of the other two remaining, McGovern was chosen, given the significant cost difference between the two proposals. Administration is very comfortable with this package. They actually went and had a meet with the providers. They checked with other municipalities who are using the system. Basically, will have an impact over time. This is, we're talking, I think, five months or so before we implemented, but this would add some efficiencies and effectiveness with respect to the process. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Great, thank you. I move council review the 2012...
Sorry, Counselor Radburn, I'll recognize Counselor Rice. Counselor Rice?
I will declare conflict since this is my employer.
Okay, thank you very much. So Counselor Rice declares a conflict of interest, and we'll leave the council chambers. Sorry, Counselor Radburn, please continue.
Good, thank you. I move council review the 2012 Business Reviolation Zone Budget at the council meeting schedule on Monday, March 5th, 2012 at 6:30 PM. The 2012 budget has been submitted. However, our standard annual process is that it comes to council following the annual general meeting of the Downtown Business Association, which will happen, as we understand it, late in February. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. If we could call back Counselor Rice? Counselor Rice and Counselor Radburn, if you want to continue on.
Thank you.
I move council approve funding in the amount of $10,000 to the Centre for Research and Innovation, CRI, for the development of an OSB research and development commercial business plan. I could speak, provide some context information relative to this, Mayor Given. This business feasibility plan would look at the potential clients and users. It would also look at the funding proposals to make this happen. Basically, this project is an innovation centre in the Peace region that would focus on research and development for and commercialization of OSB products. This unique initiative has potential to grow global market opportunities for a struggling OSB industry. It could lead to the development of a whole new value-added industry, creating jobs and diversifying and growing our local economy. Two significant opportunities for new generation of OSB products have already been identified. One is the new strand-based access mats, rig mats, made from modified OSB. And secondly, second, a variety of other industrial OSB products, primarily structural and form. And reading from their letter, also the uniqueness of the Peace Country-based OSB R&amp;D and commercialization center would be Canada's only 8x20 coal press. The press is not only capable of manufacturing these larger, commercial-sized strand-based mats, but the size opens up opportunities for the development of other new OSB products for a variety of applications such as structural components for construction, oil and gas, and other industries. We had asked in our motion that a funding source be identified, and Director of Legislative Services has informed me today that there's flexibility in the Economic Development Department budget to cover the $10,000. The other, the other groups that are being asked for support for this, they're thinking about $50,000 to $70,000 to do this study, where the, are the Connie Grand Prairie, MD of Greenview, Community Futures, Grand Prairie International, Prida, Horse Lake, First Nation, Ainsworth, and Infinite Mat Solutions Incorporated, who are already, I guess, a business who are looking at this as a potential growth industry. I think that basically the committee really felt that there was some, oh, CRI really believes that there is support, there is a market in this region. They believe there are partners, that this could be something very unique and grow our economy. So I think their support and their working with their contacts provincially and locally, I think they really feel this has a chance of going. I guess finally, just my final comment would be that, as I personally, this is not for the committee, but as I personally looked at this, I mean, our brand indeed is opportunities through innovation. And for me, this is an opportunity to invest a little bit in a project that definitely is innovative and I think has potential for significant opportunities in our area. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Questions for Counselor Radburn? This is going to be a press, and I guess the research will end up buying it if all the areas come into it. But this company that wants to do these mats or something, they'll be the first online to use it, so they'll be able to utilize it and make money from it directly. Will anybody else be able to use it? Because it's kind of, I guess, a press for a certain size for a certain thing, and I don't know how it could be brought to other developments, but I'm just wondering if it is or not.
Counselor Radburn?
I think that's a great question that we talked about at the committee too. I guess the point there is that this, the project really is this innovation center, and they're focusing on OSB products for now. But really, any company, including this one that's already in, working on something, would have to pay to access and use the press on the facility, right? So they would have to pay for that. And other users or other companies who are looking at other products would similarly have to pay for the use of that facility. So it is, that would help make the innovative center sustainable, right? Because there's income coming in. So yeah, it's not a free ride for those companies that want access, that they would have to pay for the use of the facility and the equipment, as I understand.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. This is an amazing initiative in a market that's really in the tank right now. This is not just only for mats. It can, it can make walls with our value and the support and strength that it's going to have for walls. It just opens up the, really, the world market, and we're putting seed money in something that could really change the OSB market throughout the world. And I think if Grand Prairie is going to be the seed money to change something like that, then I'm definitely in support of this motion.
Thanks, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Is this question probably go to Ken, because I think there are seven OSB mills, and there's two only operating and one here and one in Etson. Will this come out of reserve and won't affect taxes, as if we are one of the highest in taxes in Alberta? Where would this come from?
I already mentioned this is coming from our Economic Development Department budget for this year. We're not going to reserves, we're not adding out to the tax bill.
But what I'm wondering, Counselor Radburn, is there a possibility it could come out of reserve that we have money in reserves? Is there any chance we can, and I'm directing it to Ken?
So a question for Director Finance. Are there appropriate funding sources? Mr. Anderson?
I believe the most appropriate funding source is the Economic Development Budget. That is what it is doing, is stimulating the economy in the area as opposed to using a reserve. And there is capacity within that budget now.
Okay, good. Thank you for that answer. Any further discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
I'd like to make an amendment for this $10,000 to come out of the Economic Development Fund Reserve.
It already is.
It's coming out of that? Oh, I thought there was a reserve.
So...
Is that a reserve?
Sorry, I'm just going to clarify this. There is no economic development reserve. Administration is proposing taking this out of Economic Development's 2012 budget that council previously approved. So it's just out of their funds that they plan to have in their department, and they would just choose to spend on this rather than something else.
Something else.
So, but that does bring up a question for me, which I don't know if administration should be prepared to answer now. For me, it would be important to know what it is that we might not be doing instead. So what is it that administration is recommending that we not do, or the $10,000 that we have budgeted? Where sort of is it coming from within the department's budget? Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Development Budget contains $35,000 for advertising and promotion. And what our Economic Development Officer is doing is focusing much more of the advertising and promotion towards, through the website. So there will be savings in that account. So there won't be anything that we are not proceeding with. It will be a realignment of funding.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for that. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is a very important issue to me because there are taxes, but as well, I think I'm... council, I've been in logging industry for 20 years, so this is a very good initiative. And I'm glad to ask these questions, because we are one of the highest in problems for taxes property.
Okay, thank you very much. So any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Redburn, was there anything else from that segment?
Good. Thank you. Just two other things on the agenda. One was, we need to receive further information from the Audit Services Plan for our 2011 audit. And secondly, we did receive a letter from Minister of Education, Minister Lukasik. We had in our, in our trip to Edmonton, offer that we might be interested in being a partner in a pilot of Wi-Fi on school buses. He has sent us a letter back saying, thank you very much, I'll keep your offer in mind. They, they're preferring to focus on rural school districts at this time. But I appreciated him getting back to us on something that we thought it was an idea when we visited. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redburn. So that finishes our committee business, and would take us on to correspondence. Just as we're going through the last few things, council members, I neglected to ask at the start of the meeting if anybody had any reports from your external council appointments. So just keep that in mind. If you have any, flag me down, we'll have an opportunity for that in a second. So we had no items of correspondence. So we did have two delegations, though. The first from the Grand Prairie Minor Ball Association, and then the second from the Canadian Cancer Society. So we'll deal with them in the order they came to us. So on the Ball Association, Councilor Rice?
I move that we refer the issues identified by the Minor Ball Association to administration for a report and back to council.
Okay. Back to council, back to the appropriate committee.
Okay, appropriate committee.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So the second delegation was the Canadian Cancer Society. We need a motion either to receive further information or to take some specific action. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that we receive this further information and forward the Canadian Cancer Society Tobacco's Reduction, Tobacco Reduction Policy Recommendations to the appropriate committee.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. That motion's in order. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I believe that was all of our delegation business, and we had no notices of motion. So council member reports, were there any committees, sorry, council members, that you had meetings on? If you'd like to just ring in to the queue if you did have any. So any of our external appointments? There was none, none meeting in the first half of January? If that's the case, then we'll move on to council member roundtable. And Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. January 11th, we attended a community retreat all the way to Sexmouth. It was a very good day. We got to tour around Sexmouth, it's a beautiful little town. On January 12th and 13th, we had For the Love of the Community in the city of Grand Prairie. And it was quite well-received, and if you look at Facebook, and there's a lot of people taking a lot of interest in this. And I, when I got over to something that's not very expensive, is chalk on sidewalks that kids or communities can do, just say, have a nice day, or something nice, and just bring up your, lift up your spirits. January 16th, we met with a lot of the PC candidates running for, to win, I guess, in the Smokey constituency riding, since Mel Knight's retiring after 11 years' service. January 19th, we also met with the Urban Development Institute, and I found this very, very intriguing and about maybe the future, and have more meetings. Very interesting in how the city has been growing, and what the forecasts might be, and outside boundaries of the county building on other borders, and all kinds of stuff. It was a great meeting. I look forward to more. As well as we had January 20th meeting at Warehouser, which I really look forward to. I do work there in the sawmill. And I thought that we would have a tour of the pulp plant, and we didn't get it, we ran out of time. So hopefully next time we'll have a tour of the pulp plant, because there's a lot of money being put into that facility. I think over 100 and some million dollars in this last year and this following years coming up. January 23rd, also, we had a meeting today, and there was five MLAs, two ministers, and I think they were pretty in awe of the facility. And I bet there's a lot of numbers here, people may know them of membership and daily use, and I think anybody in the community knows this, this multiplex is a really, really good multiplex. Just looking for the name.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On January 11th and 12th, I was present for the council strategic planning, as was pretty much all of council, and the mayor, and city administration. We had an update on where we are in our three-year strategic plan. It's good to know that we're right on track. What I really appreciated was setting up the meetings that we're going to have right away to deal with our long-term strategic initiatives that were identified in, in that strategic plan as well, such as the Crystal Center, Crystal Center expansion plans and our industrial and development strategies. On January 13th, I was participated in the For the Love of Cities presentation by Peter Kagayama. I have to say, it was an excellent exercise for engaging the public, and I would look forward to any future engagements that, where we could bring him back, because I thought that it was a really positive experience, and I got a lot of positive feedback from that as well. And it's also good to hear that a lot of these little initiatives that we discussed at that meeting, people are just running with. And we're going to see some, see these things just pop up, because people are just so engaged, people that are engaged in their community, they, I think they're really passionate about it, and it really is going to help us build a more lovable city. On January 16th, I was present for the meetings with the MLA candidates for the GP Smokey nomination leadership. On January 18th, I participated in the Sports Tourism Strategy Public Input Session. On January 19th, I was present with the Urban Developers Institute meeting. On January 20th, the Centre 2000 Buildings Renovation Subcommittee met to open some tenders for the management for the construction project, and I'll have more to report on that after our next board meeting. On January 23rd, which was this afternoon, we gave a tour of the multiplex to Cabinet Ministers and some other provincial representatives. Great job, Mayor Given, on your, on your presentation of the facility and how it has impacted our community, as well as administration's numbers that they provided us for usage and revenue and all that stuff. And that's everything.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor Rice?
I too attended the council retreat. Kudos to Greg and his staff. I think it was a very productive period of time, and enjoyable, as well as a real opportunity to gain knowledge. I attended also the For the Love of Cities and would echo Councilor Wong's comments. It certainly was something that seems to have caught the inspiration of a large segment of the community. I know the organization I worked for is looking at following up on at least two of the ideas that were put forth that they, well, they didn't win. They still were exciting enough that I think we'll see them go ahead. So I think you're seeing some spinoff, and I love that for the kinder, gentler Grand Prairie on Facebook. I think it's a, it's an excellent initiative by someone. I just met with the progressive conservative candidate candidates, and want to thank them for coming to talk to us and hearing what we expect in our MLA and the level of service. So I guess forewarned is forearmed. I attended a local authorities pension plan meeting. Next year will be the 50th anniversary of laugh, and a real education and commitment push is on there, so it's rather exciting. And that's it for me.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I was also at the council strategic planning session. I found it quite refreshing, and I think it's what we needed to keep us motivated to keep going forward. So thanks very much for, to administration for putting that on. On the 12th, I attended Tab Pollock's kickoff campaign for his race to be the next MLA for the progressive conservatives. Also met with Tam, Tom Burton, and Everett McDonald on the 16th with the rest of council. On the 17th, I had a meeting with Elaine Garrel with Prida to discuss some changes going on there. More to come in the next month. 19th, also met with the Urban Developers Institute. Good discussion there. On the 20th, I went to longtime resident Bill Simpson's funeral, and this was an outstanding citizen. A lot of people wouldn't know that he was, had a part in, you know, putting together the Golden Age Centre, QE2 Hospital, all those types of things. So he will be missed. Also on the 20th, went to the Big Brothers and Big Sisters Ultimate Escape fundraiser at Rock City. Tell you, they did a great job. It looks like they raised lots of, lots of cash for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and it was a lot of fun for everyone. Briefly took the tour today of the multiplex with the cabinet ministers in town. And then finally, it's my daughter's 10th birthday today, so happy birthday, Amy.
Well, happy birthday, Amy, from the mayor. Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks. Happy birthday, Amy. I also attended the retreat in Sexmouth, and we continued on the Centre 2000, and, and the camera must have that now, it's that Peter Kagayama's book on For the Love of Cities. And he was so impressed, he did a tour of our multiplex. And he is going to have our multiplex pictures in his presentation when he travels around the rest of the world doing his presentations, or around America. But for sure, it's going to be in his presentation. He was very impressed by, by our city. That was the, continued the 13th. So the 14th, I ended up in the mayor's carving challenge in Fort St. John High on Ice. And I must say, Bill, we, we lost, but we give her a good, good kick like we do. And I brought 20 of these to Fort St. John, and doing a little bit of economic development on the side, and they were very pleased that it is open. And I was very pleased to find out that there has been a number of citizens, and it's more than a handful, have already been in our multiplex and tend to come back and visit Grand Prairie and the multiplex. So I was very pleased to report on that. On the 16th, I met with the three candidates opting for position as our MLA, and hopefully one of them will be very successful and meet with us. On the 19th, I was part of the council that met with the Urban Development Institute, and it was very important, important meeting. These were the movers and shakers of the developers of industrial, commercial, and residential land and buildings in the city of Grand Prairie. And they give us kudos that we have removed some of the red tape in our moving forward, growing the city, and annexing, and pushing for Highway 43X bypass. So I was very happy to hear them, and they were very positive with the city of Grand Prairie. Things have been a little flat in the real estate, as I know from my own personal, but things are coming, and we're optimistically very positive going down the road. On the 20th, I attended with a couple other councillors, the 11 o'clock at Warehouser, and they're really very, very important on safety, as Councilor McLean can probably attest to that. Where we had, you know, 15, 20 minutes on safety, and where we muster if there's a gas, and if, if there's a fire, where we go, and whatever, and I thought that was very, very nice, so. And the tour of the sawmill, to see all that lumber going to Japan, but knowing that it's from Northern Alberta gives us, we very proud. Today, of course, the tour of the multiplex with the cabinet ministers, they were as in awe as many of the people that, that visited. So keep the good, keep up the good work. We got some numbers that were, were on track, and maybe a little ahead of track, but it was, it was very rewarding, and that's what kind of two weeks I've had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. It's been rather extremely busy a couple of weeks here. I attended, also attended the council retreat with, with some people you may or may not know. I also, I attended the I Love Grand Prairie Conference by Peter Kagayama at the Multicultural Centre for Engaging the Community for Success. We also had a downtown visioning session down at Duke's one evening there. I also attended the Tab Pollock Campaign Kickoff here in Grand Prairie. We had two 100th Anniversary Homecoming Fair meetings. I'm really excited about the sports and tourism workshops last week. Excited to hear what, what, what comes out of that and our, our sports and tourism strategy. And the UDI Information Exchange was, was very welcomed by UDI. They were very impressed with some initiatives we're doing, and look forward to more of those meetings. This past weekend, I was out of the city in Edmonton at the Edmonton International Airport for their renovation, renovation opening. Very nice, very shiny, new, new structure building there, streamlining passengers out and in, out of, out of the airport. Biggest news is they are approximately 300 million under budget from the time that they tendered after the crash till the time that they paid the bills. And here at City Hall, I was with the PC contenders, Tab Pollock, Tom Burton, and Everett McDonald. And the most important thing I did was went to school with, with my daughter for her special day. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. All right. Quickly, I'll try. January 10th, I attended the celebration of the 30 years of French immersion in our fair city, along with the dedication of French library resources to the French Library Resource Centre here in our public library. I was able to speak, since I was the principal of Parkside when immersion was initiated 30 years ago, and, and represent the city. So enjoyed that. Thank you to CPA. Jan 11th and 12th, I also attended the council planning session and professional development time. 13th, I attended the public session, We Love Grand Prairie. 16, we had the, those vying for Mel Knight's position as in GP Smokey. The 17th, I attended the Grand Prairie Fire Department unveiling of their new attack engines. It was a media event at the South Fire Hall, and what I wanted to mention there is I just, I'm so impressed with the, the planning and the involvement of staff in the design of the equipment that we use in our fire department. Just as another demonstration of how professional our firefighting service in the city of Grand Prairie is. Bill?
Mr. Walker?
They are primary engines that their first, first job is to carry the crew that goes in and does the fire attack, rather than supporting that.
January 18th, I was a participant in the Sport Tourism Strategy Session. I went to the morning session and had a very involved and engaged group working together. January 19th, I had three, three council commitments. One was the Northern Alberta Seniors Transportation Meeting. They're co-hosted by the AMA and Northern Alberta Development Council. Also attend the UDI Meeting with Council Information Session at noon. And then I am the council rep on the G-Prep Management Committee Meeting. At that meeting, we looked at draft terms of reference, some draft policy statements, and we confirmed the direction of requesting a ministryal order to form a joint committee involving municipalities, yeah, a joint committee, rather than a municipalities doing their own thing, or a regional commission, which would be much more work involved. So it looks like it's the terms of reference will be confirmed next time, and then probably come to council for, for ratification. January 20th, council Warehouser meeting and tour. I went to the meeting part, I couldn't stay for the tour part, because I did have a tender opening at 2 o'clock on Friday. That was for engineering services for sidewalk program. And also attended the MLA slash cabinet tour of the multiplex city. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Council Redburn. Council O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. Pretty much everything's been talked about, but I'll just kind of go over a few highlights that I was involved with. Council retreat on the 11th and 12th, but also the night of the 11th, I went to the Claremont Ag Society, they asked me to stop in and discuss some of the recreational facilities that are available in Grand Prairie that, that are out for rent, and... in Grand Prairie that are out for rent, and opened up their doors and opened up their eyes to what we have here. On the 12th, also, I attended the Tab Pollock campaign kickoff. 13th was For the Love of the Cities. It was really neat and interesting to see the youth, the seniors, the service clubs, the Downtown Association, school board members, police services, and our city administration attending this. I think they accounted, or they invited 125 and 140 people showed up. Not really sure on that number, but I know everybody that left was talking, and it was a real positive atmosphere that these are things that we can do. It's not a lot of money, but you know what? We can make things happen. So, that was a real good presentation that was brought up to the city. On the 16th, met with the political candidates, Tom, Tab, and Everett. And on the 17th, I also attended the South Side Fire Hall, PD Gear Station, and I did, was really impressed, once again, like Counselor Adburn had said, the attack and the new water tanker is what we've got. The biggest part that I was really impressed with was the ergonomics. There's no need to climb over any of the equipment anymore. Everything is on the ground. They can check monitors. They don't have to, they've got lit lights that show up where different levels of water are. They've actually got a robotic top-mounted nozzle that they can preset and control, and the operator can be walking around the fire truck, and knowing where the nozzle is, he can adjust without having to jump on top of the truck and risk slipping and falling. And so, health and safety is what they're looking for, and longevity of their health of their firefighters. So, hats off to them. And once again, reiterate that it was the firefighters that had input on what things should be included. One of the neat things, they have a backboard. Usually, it's kept outside where it's cold, and they show up to the accident scene. Well, they put a little compartment in where it's near the heat of the engine, and so when the backboard is used, it's not ice cold like conditions like we've had last week. It would be warm. So, those are the things that they were looking at. On the 18th, I attended the sport tourism. I stopped in in the morning to see what kind of people and groups that were going to be there, and in the afternoon, or in the evening session, I attended that one, and it was an awesome presentation, and the user groups had some really good ideas. The 19th, I attended the UDI, the Urban Development Institute. Once again, said it was a great meeting that we had. The 20th was the Warehouser planer mill tour and meeting. We discussed their $400 million upgrade. We discussed that their products are, as a demand for their products, they're one of the biggest employers in the pulp industry in Canada. And it was, for the sawmill side, they've got product that they ship overseas, China, and they get excellent dollar value for that. It's got to meet certain criteria. They can meet it, but it's a source that comes from this plant here in Grand Prairie. So, we're pretty proud of that. Also, I attended the Big Brothers and the Big Sisters fundraiser at Rock City that evening. On the 21st, I gave greetings from both the mayor and council to the Anavits. They had an award presentation and years of service and that sort of thing that they do in-house in the clubs. They also gave out $28,000 that they raised themselves. Local needs, example, the Army cadets and the Air cadets are going over to Vimy Ridge this year, and they're sending 90,000 people not, there'll be 90,000 people visiting that this year, not necessarily when our group goes, but I think there'll be 90 from Grand So, the Special Olympics were one of the recipients of some funding, the Friendship Centre, Metis elders groups. So, it was nice to see these people and contact and discuss some of their needs and concerns and what the money is going to do for them. And it was a great experience that night. And once again, today, we met with the MLAs from Edmonton and area. Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So, there were a number of events that were covered, so I'll be very, very brief. I also attended the 30-year celebration of French immersion in the city, and of course, attended all of the city council planning sessions and strategic planning, as well as the For the Love of Cities event with Peter Kagayama. I want to thank the members of the public who showed up and who generated such fabulous ideas, and I think, like the rest of council, I'm excited to see where those ideas go. I also attended the meeting with the candidates for the PC nomination, the Grand Prairie Smokey constituency, and just want to highlight why the city of Grand Prairie chooses to undertake this. It's really an opportunity for us as council to share our point of view with the candidates so that they understand the issues that the city of Grand Prairie has. And it's also the same opportunity that we give to any politician from any party who comes to the city of Grand Prairie and wishes to speak to council. We certainly believe that it's important that the message gets out there about what our needs are, and the more people that we have that understand the Grand Prairie story, the better off we'll be. I also attended sports tourism workshops, and I want to thank the members of the public, sports organizations, Chamber of Commerce, and Tourism Association who came together for that and look forward to some future results. Also attended the meeting with the Urban Developers Association. Had the opportunity on Friday to attend the Warehouser tour, and I have to say that first, the thing that stood out for me the most about that visit was how central safety is to their culture at Warehouser. They obviously take great pride in their safety programs and their safety record, and I think they're obviously a leading example of any private industry I've seen, and I really think that there's probably something that we, as an organization, could learn from them, because everything that they do out there is about safety. And secondly, in the planer mill, what a fantastic addition. I couldn't believe the amount of technology that there was in there. And if there's anybody that's looking to get into a high-tech industry, you might not have thought of the planer mill as being a high-tech industry, but I tell you what, it sure is, considering that every board that goes through there has its own unique ID number, measurements down to the half-millimeter, and each board on the line might be destined to a different market, and it was incredible to see all that in action. Later that night, I had an opportunity to drop the puck at the Storm game on behalf of the Canadian Heart and Stroke Foundation as part of their Red Dress event. And then on Saturday night, I attended the annual awards of excellence for the Grand Prairie Home Builders Association. This Monday, I attended at Hillside School to read Greek legend to grade six, two grade six classes to kick off the start of literacy week. And then finally, of course, we had the tour with cabinet ministers. I want to thank the ministers for making the time to tour the multiplex. We did have an opportunity to hear from administration a little bit about the numbers, and I won't sort of steal all the thunder, but the one that stood out for me was that since the building has opened, they've had over 40,000 visits. And that's just the folks that have chosen to swipe their membership card or swipe their pass. So, 42,000 visits since December 8th, which is pretty impressive. I think they're averaging about 1,500 people a day through the building, which is fantastic news. So, we look for other great results coming forward. Counselor Rice, just so that you know, with the ministers, one of the sort of wrap-up messages that we shared with them was that the city was certainly very thankful for the MSI money that we had, and we let them know that the multiplex is the result of programs like MSI, and that they certainly needed to continue it on and find a replacement for the Municipal Sustainability Initiative Grant Program when it ends in 2014. So, hopefully, that message was driven home. And for me, it was all worthwhile taking them through when the Minister of Infrastructure asked if there was any way that the schools could be more involved in the project, and I said, "Yes, we have room for expansion." And then he also said that he really believed that it would be an attraction that people would come to Grand Prairie for, to go into the water park. And I said, "Yes, sir." That's how we built it. And with that, we'll adjourn our council meeting. Thank you very much.